Well, Paul, so all four members are present. We don't have a conference conference with our light agenda. Sorry, motion to approve the consensus.
Okay.
All of them. We have the minutes from our May twenty eighth meeting. The trial must have gone into overtime. I know all the comments from the public there. Any changes needed on that?
Uh, page two, Seth Boon, I think that means Seth Burns. He could please.
I believe the chief of change's last name is too. You always have the last note.
Just double check that.
And I've already emailed my.
Your son was the same. But you did a very good job considering all the comments. Without any paragraph from the minutes. A motion to approve the minutes with those notes.
So.
All votes in favor? We don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do have open session if you remember the public. Anyone here has comments or questions or remarks? How's that?
Yes.
Could identify yourself.
Yeah, David Lewis. Dover.
Would we assume that you're here?
Yeah. Well, never know. No, I had a suggestion. The downtown bridge here. Where we just had Willard returned. To dedicate that bridge for to William and Barton Merrill. The Memorial Bridge. And I spoke to Jim White and he said that they needed the selectance approval first. Before they could go ahead and do anything. And I was just wondering if that was a possibility.
It is a possibility. Yeah, it's a state bridge. You know, T would have to approve, but this board would have to make a recommendation favorable to that. And then it would have to be a legislative act, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, Jim White said he could push it through in January, so.
I would suggest you want to act on that, or you want to give that some consideration for another time?
Yes, we have the our representative, Chad Burton.
Yes, Jim White is not representative.
No.
I thought Chad would be.
Yeah, now I spoke to Chad also, and he said that they're working on the the other Essex Street Bridge for a veterans memorial bridge.
Right.
For all the veterans.
Right. I would suggest that that would be an agenda item for your next meeting on June twenty third. That makes sense?
Sure.
Okay, can you wait? We waited eighty three years for Robert Merrill from home.
That'd be a great dedication. Yes.
Acting was a little more forceful, that would be a good thing, but I think that would be the for the next meeting.
Whatever we decide for a name for the bridge. Seems that it would be fitting behind that with the new bridge going here. And have it all be one deal. Bottle of champagne, I don't know, they break a bottle of champagne over the railing or something. Do that with the ship? I don't know. And that is now probably three years off.
At least three years.
Yeah, probably three years off.
They changed the name of the bridge after someone then tear it down.
Yeah, that's thinking about it that way, it's the same thing, but we could have it prepped long before then and have it coincide with opening the bridge.
But that's also best suggestion.
All right.
Other comments or questions?
Sean, first of all, I just want to thank Jane, Elsina, Dave, myself, we were all at the funeral today for Willard. Somber ceremony, but it was well done by members of the Legion here in the running green room. Dave was one of them, just kind of applied, and I appreciate that. Have like you've been doing, Jane showing up and that burn obviously, so it was very good representation and it was very good ceremony, and I'm proud that we got him back home and buried a year old, so. And I'll see, I talked to you a while ago about the end of Morton Ave where all the weeds are going. I just got to make a public look at that, maybe I think set mechanic street and Cherry Street, I believe. Kathy's another one where you can't even see, so I can pull out a little ways, but. Lastly, I want to thank you, Tom, for all your years of service from myself and the members of the friend of the Fox Trot, I can say a little mean that you've I've learned a lot from you over the past year.
Some are good, though.
I, I, they are, no, they're very good, Tom, and I think we've had very good conversations, very, very cordial, and I appreciate that. I hope you're still involved in the town in some way after your retirement, but still enjoying your retirement. I know you don't want to be here all the time, but I think the town could still use your input.
Fans to go anywhere else.
Good, good.
Thank you for your contribution.
I appreciate that, Tom, and I hope you do enjoy retirement. I am running tomorrow, but sincerely, I do thank you for your service, Tom.
I'd be happy to switch places with you. I'm very good at retirement.
But thank you, Tom, and I really appreciate it.
Other folks?
Robert Elzus.
Yes.
We've got some issues with the town board. And nobody has ever referred to a grievance process that's supposed to be given to a person with a grievance to address the board over issues. And what is that process? Is there a process available?
We've got a citizen with a grievance.
If there's a resident with an issue that they would like to address the board about, what is the grievance process? And how do they find out about how to address the board? Without having to file lawsuits against the town?
Well, you do what you've done in the past and are doing.
Well, I've been asking for probably close to three years about this, and nobody's ever addressed my question to me.
Well, our job during the public comment session is build the piece, but listen.
Yeah, but I just saw it back and.
Listen to your remarks.
Like I said, I just saw back and forth in comments with other members of the community, and I believe I'm accorded the same respect and courtesy. Where is it? Do we not have policies that the town departments are supposed to be fulfilling? Like the retaliation policy I've been speaking about?
I'm not aware of any retaliation.
You're not aware of the retaliation policy? Is, is the, does the board have a responsibility to discipline another board member? Who's conducting themselves unethically with members of the community?
Well, you've asked that question multiple times over here.
Right.
And the answer is always the same, that the town charter has a recall provision in it.
This is not the only story. When the board has a member that's acting in poor conduct, there are ethics rules.
We have a code of.
Right, you have a code of ethics, and when there's a code of ethics violation, the board has a responsibility to address that man.
Well, we may address it through a censure of the board member.
But your statement was you didn't have any responsibility to take any action against a sitting board member.
That is not my statement, never.
I have it recorded.
Well.
I'd be happy to play it with the.
That's all right.
But I'm glad you're gone next weekend anyways, so thank you for your time, Bill.
Wonderful to see you on my last meeting.
Yeah, I figured I'd make your day.
You did.
Now, Ms. Greenman Seer, you're a member of a group that's called Partners for Peace.
No.
You were a member of the founders that were a part of this. And we have people in the community that are being threatened. And Partners for Peace doesn't answer any responses. There's nothing, no call, no, nothing, and Ms. Conroy made false statements to the board accusing me of threatening because I asked why the town manager at the time, not at Elsina, was paying the chairman of the board with Europe approval? Over a hundred thousand dollars a year for over twenty years in biweekly grant fund payments? And why the town office employees had spent over ten thousand dollars on tape, paint, trees and parties at twice for personal celebration? While we have members of the community who are struggling, having leaves placed on their home or even seizing properties? Were having parties. And Ms. Conroy at the time accused me of threatening her because I asked why she told the members of the community that I was the only person who had an issue with Merrill Mills Road, where we now have reports indicating that I was actually accurate in my description of the problems that exist. And I've not received any type of an apology for that. A public apology would be nice, Jane.
And it probably happens.
Then it probably won't, but that's probably why you're not going to get reelected.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Phil, does anyone else like this? All right, we'll close the public comment question. Are there any remarks from select board members?
I, again, just want to publicly thank the silver Fox Trot and area fire departments for their commitment to be a part of Saturday's welcoming back for Private Merrill. And then in addition to what Sean had said, today's celebration of his return was very well received. The story behind it is just remarkable. There's still another chapter to be written for the family, and I appreciate everyone's effort.
After the swing up, my brand's been upon you yesterday, I guess. First time seeing the new guard rail that's been installed up there, so. Great, great job in those areas. I know they worry about it sometimes washes out and then it's a little narrow, so. It's nice to see that in place. I'm sure fishing from there would be a little more difficult, but you know, bad and evil going off the side. And of course, tomorrow we have to take the vote, so hopefully goes out and does their thing. And I appreciate that we know there's been issues with trees, of course, that come up, and I know we're trying to respond as quickly as I can to them. As always, if you see something at the cemetery or different properties that doesn't look safe, please let us, Elsina, know, and we will look into it as fast as we can.
And real?
Yeah, hello, Tom, I just really want to thank you for your leadership, always very active this whole time. Yeah, I just really, really appreciate how you manage all the moving parts. We've had a lot of in the last three years. You've seen us through.
It's a privilege to serve my community, won't forget. And I think I'll be seventy three later this week, that's long. Anyone else? Henry?
Well, I'll go with Jane on the Saturday night at Larry Kuhn home for Private Merrill. Just an amazing, emotional, proud, honorable and honored to be there and to be able to be with these guys here as well. And though I know it wasn't an exciting point in time when I saw Chief Burns at the gas station half an hour later, and he told me about his day and coming up the highway with Private Merrill, and it was just an exciting story to listen to him tell of coming up the highway and the state police slowing traffic so then they could come on, and then he was in the lead and you know, I just, I hope he gets a chance and maybe even tonight to say what how exciting that was in a very somber moment, but wow, how proud to be there myself, so. That was amazing for them coming through town. While we're coming through town, though, I have noticed, and I asked last year, and nothing's really been done, could you check with the state? Again, because it's not just gravel roads, and the drains on Main Street are still full like they were last year, and they've not been cleaned, so. I think it's a matter of just calling the state and they'll tell you they'll come when they feel like it probably, but at some point it'll become an issue, and we'll have flooding somewhere in the public. And just when you're already an update on downtown, the construction is suspension, that's all I'll see on. If that comes up later. Well, that'll do.
Jane?
So I will ask Chief Burns to share, because I think it showed his leadership through two other states, so if you don't mind giving a real quick.
Big steps.
I'm on the spot.
Started Logan, where Massachusetts State Police.
There you go.
Came to New Hampshire and the New Hampshire.
So it, this started, the conversation started on Tuesday of last week, which was a little bit of a last minute thing or something like this. We were, the main state police weren't a hundred percent sure if they were going to actually do an escort or not. Due to some changes in policies with them. So we had started the process of at least creating a escort from Newport to Dover. And through that process, the Massachusetts State Police agreed to do an escort from Massachusetts to New Hampshire. New Hampshire agreed to pick it up at the Mass-New Hampshire line, continue it to the main line where the main state police did agree to pick up the escort from there. I asked and was very graciously given permission, but given that Mr. Merrill was the silver Fox Trot president, I felt it was important that we have representation in that. I got permission from Elsina and the state police allowed me to take part in the escort, beginning at the New Hampshire main state line. Not only did they allow me to take part in it, they actually asked me to be the lead here. And it was an experience coming northbound that I will never forget. Very humbling and absolute honor to leave that escort from the New Hampshire line. The amount of support kicked in, there were far more overpasses that were covered by police and fire personnel than were not. And then once we got to Newport, the crowd seemed to grow. A very good showing in Newport between police, fire and citizens lining the street. We got to Corinna, and there were enough citizens lining the streets in Corinna that they were actually out into the road a little bit. Same thing with Dexter. And then when we came into Dover, I got goosebumps when I came around the corner on the water and saw the crowd there. Just a tremendous showing of support for Merrill family and for Private Merrill coming home.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. So for those that are interested, look up the efforts both in our community and around the world it took to bring this individual home. It's hard to put into words what it feels to know that we still care about the people that went out to protect our little life. I think sometimes we forget there is price for that, and there are families out there that still don't have the answers that they wish they had, so seeing our community come together and the networking, like Chief just said, is unreal, so thank you to everybody that showed up both that day and at the funeral, because it does.
Other comments? Right, we'll close the board comment session. And any need to adjust in the agenda? We want the committee report, so the protection committee did meet and discussed the ATV proposal we were talking about later, and Jane has included the notes from that meeting in our. Anything else you want to mention about that, Jane?
Well, I'll just give a real brief summary again. What we did was we gathered information from the public hearing concerns. Department heads, the ATV club representatives, state law and guidance, other towns, as well as letters from the public. We covered the role of game wardens, education piece that needs to go with it, frequently asked questions so that people are informed. Signage, we also talked about time of operation, we did tracking complaints. The ATV and the town contract, as well as we reviewed the roots and or came up with suggestions, as well as actions that we need to continue to work on to finalize the plan, so that in the highlight is what we have.
Good. Any other committees, or time where Matt, that we need to talk about tonight? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is the discussion on the ATV public road access proposal that we had the public hearing on at our last meeting on May twenty eighth. Thoughts on this? The committee has recommended that we do approve all the requests and consent.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the work that the protection committee has done to pass on with a very wonderful list of things we looked at. But in in summary, my feelings and my concerns haven't changed since ten days ago when we met. Only I, at that time, I spoke about my concerns for promoting use of fossil fuels for recreation. Our town has been working to become a pedestrian friendly community, we've just, we're talking about bike lanes. And I feel like we're working across purposes with one another to pursue extending access for ATVs. I'm concerned about safety, particularly on River Street, which is so narrow and where many children live and play either in the street or close to the street. And I guess what I've added to my concern is that the public has only been aware of this proposal for less than two weeks when it came to the board on the twenty eighth of May. We had a committee meeting prior to that, but that, you know, those are not usually attended by the public and they're not promoted, so the first time the public had a chance to learn about this was ten days ago, and I've heard from people who assumed that we would be voting on this change for our community. And then when I said no, the decision's going to be made at the select board meeting. Two constituents were very concerned about that, so I feel like we just need to slow down a little bit. And Jane suggested in theory for us that there's work to be done by the protection committee in order to sort of finalize the contract and think about well, some of the questions raised at your meeting, plus I think Laurie Blockler provided the board with a really impressive memo of recommendations, so. My suggestion is just that we wait until our next meeting in order to take action, so I would move to table this.
I would point out that we did discuss the ATV proposal two weeks prior to our May twenty eighth meeting.
Sorry.
Does anyone want to second Cindy's motion to table the RNF?
I would second for the purpose of discussion.
Do we? Yeah, for the purpose of, when do we get to discuss?
Right now.
Right now.
Right now.
All right, so if we move the second is to table discussion.
I think mine are along the lines of what Cindy just said, I don't want to hurry up and wait, I don't want to move too fast, I don't want to say no and mean yes, I don't want to be wishy washy, I'm for what we're talking about, but I want to make sure everything is in place. The rules are in place, the routes are correct, that if there's changes being made on routes, the last bit of paper I got was River Street was just back to one way and we're coming up East Main, and I thought that the state had to be involved with that, so. It's like, well, are we talking to the state before we move? We are talking about villagers project and making sure this sits and fits in with pedestrian bicycle safety and traffic, children's safety. There's the noises and noise level and speed and all that. But my thought is, how can we just say yes when there's thirty two items that we kind of need to make sure they're in place? As, as rules or contract or or something, or God forbid, an ordinance, which would take years, but I don't want to move so fast that people are saying, well, nobody nobody thought about speed limits, nobody thought about licensed drivers, nobody thought about drunk drivers in the wrong place, and and nobody, we have spoken about police, say, protection on this, but we do struggle with protecting ourselves with tires and motorcycles that we have, so. I'm all for it, but before I say yes, I'd like to make sure that all our Ts are crossed and I's are dotted. And I don't know the protocol to make sure that happens. You know, I don't want to just say let's wait, but if it's another two weeks, I mean, when we started three or four weeks ago, it was, is this something we're getting ready for next summer? Or is this something we're getting ready pre-fall? Are we, so that's all, I just, I don't want to move too fast, and I want to be assured that our rules are in place.
Well, my understanding is if we vote tonight to approve the routes, there's still some work to be done.
Right, well, that's.
At least we move forward and we get that work done before we hold figure on.
So. I think that sometimes there's people that no matter what we do, they're still going to find reasons to shoot stuff down they don't like. And we could go kicking this hand down the road, but our committees have done a very good job. I think the Dover Rovers have done a very good job at this, we have benchmarks that we've met and exceeded. I don't think we should be delaying trying to get the process moving. If the issue with wrinkles getting worked out, why don't we set an opening date for this and make sure everything's good to go, like fourth of July weekend, so that they have the time to purchase stuff they need, get working on the trail, do their part, because otherwise, like we just said, we're delaying this, and then we're delaying the start to get things to want to be, for the most part, the board seems like they want this to happen, they want it the right way. Well, kicking this down the road is one, disingenuous to every business in our community that is hoping to see this help us thrive as a community. I don't want to delay this, I want to do it the right way. But at what point do we say, we've done enough, we have to see this play out, we already have a system we developed for feedback? This is the strongest case any community that I've seen has for making this work. So I do not want to delay, I'd like to set an opening date for this to work, and obviously, if something comes up and that date isn't going to work, we can readdress it. But I really want to make sure that the crews that have to go out there and do the hard work can start doing.
Elsina, what are your thoughts on how long before this can be implemented if it gives a green light this evening? What major impediments do you have to work through?
So as far as for Route fifteen, there's going to have to be studies done for Main DOT, as was explained, and that potentially, if we don't get the ball rolling, it could take, it takes about a year for them to come out and do an assessment, and that's what we discussed with the protection committee. So the longer that we wait, the longer before they can come out to do the assessment. And who knows, as far as their capacity is? Will those be, I mean, those routes probably won't be available, at least the one down to I'm trying to remember. Well, anything across Essex Street Bridge really wouldn't, because the state would have to, once again, do an assessment on that. So any of that necessary, that portion has to be assessed by the state. The other ones, as far as like Grove Street, one, the.
Forest Ave.
Yeah, the Forest Ave, all those aren't having, those are all local roads, so those could be done as soon as possible with a contract.
The Nacho and the Bransville would be.
Correct, same thing. Yeah, the big hangup would be the Essex Street, Grove Street, uh, not Grove Street, sorry, to East Main, that aspect where Main DOT has to get. But they need the towns okay before they.
Before they can start. And in terms of the park and ride location that Gate Tree has fairgrounds, my view, that's really between the ATV club and the Fairgrounds Association.
Well, it's between us.
Is that right? Are we all that, we all get through? All right, so we would, yeah, we would vote.
And that has no effect as far as, because that's just giving you trail access to already.
If we move forward this evening, everything can be at least being on the summer, except for crossing the Essex Street Bridge and coming down. And that's to be determined by the result of the state study. Other comments and board?
Well, again, I think, I think through discussion, open discussion with protection, the intent is the club is looking for a thumbs up, knowing that there's work to be done. There are things that need to be purchased, there's tours that need to be done, that sort of thing. But if we wait another two weeks, those particular things won't happen, we have a start on a contract that needs to be worked on. But as was said, I think we need to, we need to take action as far as proceeding contingent on, and right there's our list of actions that we've outlined as a committee, and Joel and Tracy were part of that discussion, as well as Elsina, so.
Yeah, there's, I think there's a distinct difference between approving the concept and then approving the actual specific. You know, yes, we've got all this, all the I's dotted and all the T's crossed, they can start on X date. And definitely understanding that until we've at least approved the concept and pretty much nothing rolls. And there's no point in us working on a contract if we're not sure. So. Just be clear, I think what we should be voting on tonight is the concept and not saying that. Come Monday morning, the ATVs can start rolling down the street.
We need signage up.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of details to be worked out. And as long as we're all on the same page, there's a concept. And the details might. Shift back and forth a little bit here and there. Certainly, the the biggest question mark is is whether the state will approve of the route on fifteen. You don't know, we don't know. So we can, we can move forward without knowing every single detail.
Yeah, I just, I think you would ask, you know, when. It will be ready by July fifth. What is the reasonable.
Well, I'm more looking at a big picture of what timeframe we're talking about before. What people want to do is go on the ATVs and come, come on downtown and do that. I mean, that's, I mean, I think we can give them a ballpark estimate on some of that stuff right now. The unknown is the Essex Street, East Main Street.
I would like, like I said, a pick to July fourth weekend because that's obviously a big time for our community. But opening something like this also, there's a bump to it to make sure that. Police and everyone are aware that we will get into the flux of traffic. So I'd like to pick a date like that where people are already maybe on the trails and really make this a huge send off in the right direction for us. And I think also having a timeline for us to get our work done is helpful.
I think we should also, given that the Fourth of July is unbelievably close. That. We established with. All the interesting parties priority, because we could probably do, like, just say the park and ride. That could probably just be done. Pretty much straight away, and that would still be a benefit to have open as soon as possible. Whereas some of the other things, obviously fifteen is not an option anytime soon, especially if you're on the line for it. But I think we could sit down in the club and figure out which, which things are the easiest to get through and just get those done as quickly as possible and not have everything have to wait for one big package. Obviously, the contract for any use of the roads, there would be certain things that would have to be done first. But I I think the parking ride is the one that can be knocked out pretty quick.
On fault?
I only would just want to say as well, I don't think making sure that we're doing it right is kicking the can down the road. I think we need to make sure we do it right in the first place. So that as many people that can be happy can be happy. My point two is, is the Essex Street Bridge considered, it's within the the distance, so it's not a. Because if we can't get across Essex Street Bridge to get up to East Main Street, we'll just cut off that whole side.
Well, if we approve that, that route, it would only be operational until the bridge construction begins in twenty twenty six. But I'm going back and forth on that myself on, does it make sense to allow people to use that route and then take it away a few months later? Or should we wait till after the construction's done? I've come down finally and I'm feeling there is value to be gained in getting some real time data on usage of that. So having that year long this year of seeing how that works. And there would be a break for construction and we'd have some much more informed knowledge about how that's going to work. And if any modifications need to be done after the bridge is reopened, then we, we do that from a position of knowledge rather than wondering how that would work.
It might not even be feasible to have it open before the bridge construction starts if the state doesn't.
Depending on how long.
If the state takes a full year, then, then, yeah, the bridge will be.
And then there is the alternate route that that you hopefully be using, using Grove Street to get to that side of town. If that happens and there's a problem with using the bridge, at least would get ATV access to that, some of the main street bridges.
They have a chance to speak? I'd like to, since we're discussing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody else had a say.
Well, again, I think as part of the committee, we've built a communication link with protection. And encourage them, number one, to contact us with our action plan. You need to kind of come back and report to us as well as to the full board, similar to what PACC does. Not every single meeting, but come and give an update. This is what we found out or we came across this. Give an update to the full board so that, again, it's open communication and no blindsiding and et cetera.
And that's going to be an ongoing process of communication for for a couple of years at least.
Oh, yeah, correct, correct. And that introduces her.
Yeah, Ashley, do you want to?
Um, well, that just reminded me that we did talk at the protection committee about meeting in April and December. Every year to, you know, after the season and before the season, to talk about how it went, what do we need to change for the next year?
Steven, what I said, the the bridge may not be available this year depending on the state. So we'd have that extra additional route. But if we can get ball rolling, they can do their studies, then whenever the bridge gets finished. Definitely.
How how long do you guys think it would take to get the trail set up for Grove Street?
So I think, well, Grove Street would end at the Handel stop.
Right.
So we would. That wouldn't be high priority. Our high priority would be the mountains market, Red Trail.
Right, which is seems easier to implement. But the Grove Street would, you can't, you can't use the Grove Street to get to the, the, I'm still calling it Trade Wood. But you can't, then you can't go up East Main Street from there until the state DOT allows that anyway. So you have an insane impediment to get across the bridge, but and we don't know how long.
Right, so so. So we're, we're talking really getting the parking ride set up.
Well, the parking ride setup, I think the the Red Mountain Trail using Forest Avenue and Dwelling and Paul and Sanford is easily doable. I think the Bransville pound Nacho is very easy to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I really don't see a huge, the big, the big issue is the one that everybody wants to be able to get downtown. And you go to Pizza, Pizza here, who would? So, yeah, my, my bias is, my bias is action rather than study. I think government too often just puts the brakes on things. People are off the trot on this. Off the recreation activity. It does bring economic development to our community. Will there be some wrinkles that have to be ironed out? Of course, there will be anytime you make a change like this. But if we work in good faith with our partners in the ATV club, and I do see them as our partners. I'm not an ATV gearhead snowmobile type of guy myself. I don't even have my own car anymore, although my wife has very kindly allowed me to use her vehicle. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a good thunder type who will travel around the world by sailboat in order to avoid using fossil fuels. I don't want to impose my worldview on anyone else who goes across the top. It would be a strange, strange community if everyone thought the same way. So, yeah, go ahead.
So may I ask if we've narrowed it down to the big three, basically? Between the board and Elsina and, so I've heard it back there. Do we think setting a goal of July fourth opening weekend is doable? Because we've already factored, we have listed things we have to do, but we're factoring in everybody else's work. Is that timeline we think we all can realistically meet?
Go ahead with the health check with the signage.
Yeah.
I don't know how far out they are, which is, Steph and I are hopefully going to go for a ride tomorrow. And as soon as I get the final number where we are thinking we want signs, it will be an entity.
I mean, we always have a goal. You work toward a goal. If you don't get there, you reject, right? You take reality into consideration.
Well, my concern with setting the goal is what happens if you finish early? And then, okay, you advertise for July fourth and whoops, sorry, we're closed. To me, I'd rather say, let's let the process happen, give us updates and then target. Hey, to me, if we have a week before July first, that's our trial run and see how it happens. I'm just nervous about putting a target out there, both for the public and or other TV viewers saying, hey, did you hear Dover's going to be opening? Well, what happens?
Part of it also comes back to them because their signage, they're, you know, they're doing their job. But I also want to make sure for marketing for businesses we're trying to help. I really want to make sure that we pick something that people can do. You know what I mean? So, but like you said, we also can come back and say, this date doesn't work. And part of this is them making sure that the signage and our information that Elsina is very clear.
My only concern about doing a specific date. Without a few more things being ironed out is, I know how people work. They're like, oh, I heard it's open July fourth. And they don't check with anybody else. Using it on July fourth. So I I think that we should, I, as a goal internally with with the club and with us, that's. That's a good thing, and I think the park and ride probably can happen. A few of the the smaller stretches, if you only wind up with five signs, probably do the Garland one, that sort of thing. But but yeah, not wanting to put a date out until we're pretty sure we can hit it, just because I know how people work.
I agree. What if we didn't make it until July fourth and people thought that it was going to be July?
You don't want to put, you don't want to put unnecessary pressure on yourself.
Yeah.
I mean, just go with the flow, people.
I think that we'll have a lot more information on our Thursday committee meeting. That we'll be able to have the committee and then things will be updated as far as the time. Where we realistically think we can be done by.
Any other comments?
What else?
Yep. Is the route definite yet? Because I'm hearing that there might be a problem with Route fifteen. So has it been decided to route the same route that you gave out last week? Yes, do you have a handout?
Yes, so the the holdup is we need state department of transportation approval to use Route fifteen. Yeah, and we don't have a timeline.
So that's the definite route.
That's the same, that's the same. They're looking for the same route. No changes there. Okay, um, we need to, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, the motion is to table any action on.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, we're, this is.
You have this, we take, we take?
No, this.
We're in open session for the select board only. We're about ready, we're about ready to take a vote. Mr. Zuzinski, you're out of order.
Okay, these other people spoke.
We have a motion on the floor. The table.
Who's on table?
I'm ready. No one's in there with that? All right, is, is the vote of the board then not the table?
Correct.
Correct. All right. All right. How about a motion now to approve the public road access routes and the park and ride for ATVs?
So move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Does that have?
With the, with the condition we'll work out the action plan in detail.
That's what I meant.
A lot of details to be worked out, but that's, we we agree in principle to everything that's been proposed. We are on the way to getting some of these questions answered. Not all the routes will be available, open this year probably. But at least we can get a good start on it. I think that gives us some ideas of where we stand in the board. All right, so if there's a move, second any further discussion. All of the table? And all of vote, vote six to one? Okay, so unfinished business is finished. All right, we'll move on to new. New business, we have the introduction of the new select board orientation packet. Who would like to speak to that?
Yeah, really, it's your baby.
Yeah, I would say it was the work of the administration team, but it was Jamie's work. We just provided a little bit of. Commentary on the great work he did. And I think we could see, like, all select boards. Like, in the olden days, we used to have manuals, a notebook that had personnel, it had all kinds of stuff on it. So I think we see this as the beginning of that again, where projects of interest policy and all that stuff will be. In, you know, orientation materials can be numbered. So, thank you.
Well, again, we just reviewed with our newest board members, kind of picked their brains, they've been doing this for a while. What, what secrets are you discovering as you're doing this job? So we were able to get their input. Again, it's, a lot of it is is learned by doing. However, if it's written down, you at least have a starting point of the way you want to be. And my goal is to have it for individuals who are considering running. So that we're upfront to say, this is not a meeting twice a month. No, it's not. Um.
Maybe actually do work in the beginning?
Oh, just a little bit. So again, you know, use of executive session, it's not because, hey, we want to, you know, have fears behind them. No, it's like by law, there are certain ways in which we can communicate. It's also, as Cindy said, the code of ethics and our conduct. We are professionals in the role of, excuse me, we're professionals in the role of being a member of the select board. And we are. And we are elected.
Renact that.
We are elected.
Mr. Zuzinski, please cease and desist your behavior. You're out of order.
You didn't allow me to.
Oh, we're also. We're also considering how we communicate with the public differences. I'm starting to get interrupted again. And we're actually asking individuals to acknowledge that they've read this and via the oath that they take to enforce working as a team. That's it.
I have, I have a couple of, of reactions. Um, yeah, under who is eligible. It mentions that to run an individual, lucky resident of Dover Pop Rock, unaffiliated with any political party. I believe that's not true. Unaffiliated with any political party means that anyone here who's Republican or Democrat or a Green or any other party would have to, would have to unenroll from that.
Oh, okay, no, I will clarify that.
So we run, you know, you, we run in a non partisan basis. The difference between the select board and county commissioners, for instance, is that like, I have a county commissioner. I can only get signatures from members of the party I belong to at times in order to run for office. And you actually state a political party when you run. Here we are all non partisan and we might have our party affiliation. We shouldn't have to resign from any political party membership in order to run for office. But I think another way of saying that would be just to mention.
Excuse me, Bob. Could you be quiet? Because it's really hard for me to do the notes. Please.
What's it saying?
No, I can just hear you.
The less attention we pay to them, the less they have to.
I know, but I really.
I understand.
We're going to keep it going.
Yeah, so, so yes, I mean, I think another way of saying that is that. You do not, you not run, you do not run for that office on a partisan political basis. In other words, your, your party affiliation is interal.
Don't represent a party.
And you, and you get at that later on in the, in the document under time commitment and committee work. You talk about, we operate in non partisan.
In this paragraph, we could just cross that out. Yeah.
The other one was under select board power. Now, since colonial era, any member of a New England select board has had three titles. Selectman, assessor, and overseer of the board. You have now here, the select office serves as overseer for, no mention of assessors and as road commissioner. I think that.
I, that was mine.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're not road commissioners. We don't want to be road commissioners. We don't want to have seven different people all reporting to be road commissioners. Or else we will have mass confusion in the theory. So I think the select board serves as selectmen, assessors, and overseers of the board. Those are our, those are the three titles that were all sworn in. If, you know, remember when we get sworn in after the election, we have to pick three else for all three of those, those positions.
Well, again, what I do is I use the charter.
Yeah.
Knowledge and or language. And so if Elsina modified it.
Okay, that's fine.
We've noted.
Other than that, I thought it was, it was good stuff.
And again, it's a work in progress and it needs to be changed.
All right, so more work to be done on this. Do we want to approve this as a draft then? Or are there further instructions that anyone?
I guess approve as a draft and a working document and if there's any additions, feel free to let.
Yeah, approve the draft and we can go over the final copy in the next meeting.
I, I think there is value in having. I, I think there's value in having, no question. I mean, I'm, I'm pleased to see that, um, a number of people who are running since left were, have been attending our meetings. Kevin over there, um, and I think that's a really good way to understand what you're getting into. And how meetings are supposed to operate, how they're supposed to be run, how you deal with people who can be difficult.
You mean people who violate the rights. For what? That's why the lawsuit.
Okay, so let's have a motion, um, to approve the draft of this board orientation control.
Second.
Any comments on that? All in favor? Good, we'll look forward to seeing the finished product. All right, Tom and Andrew, your board, I'll see you then.
All right. Probably as everybody knows, tomorrow is the election, so please come out. It will be held at the gym at the end of the evening, call here from eight AM to eight PM. Bring your neighbors and encourage them to get out because everybody counts, pretty big topics on there. Damn many referendum questions on there, there's been a lot of conversation online, particularly on social media. I urge all residents to seek out accurate information through the website, uh, Tom's website has plenty of information as well as previous reporting from this past damn committee that you can review. I know it's kind of short amount of time, but you can binge watch all of them. Some of them are lengthy, but you can get most of them there. And that can be found on YouTube channel. You can just type into the Fox Trot main, it'll pop up. Electric vehicle chargers, construction is underway, they started installing, I think it was last Wednesday. They've got the electric panel, um, well, the outer structure as well as the pedestal set. Um, and that, and they anticipate the end of July optimistically, that'll be ready to go for people to use. So hopefully that'll remove a barrier for folks that drive electric vehicles to come into this area. Then also, next on the list is bicycle signage, I don't know if anybody's noticed that on the way out or in from Bangor or Guilford. Uh, but there is, uh, bicycle signage, talking about the laws about three feet distance. Dover Fox Trot, along with Guilford and Abbott partnered with Maine DOT to have them installed. And actually, I'll be honest, I was quite shocked that they went up as quick as they did. Um, so, and if anyone wants a map as to where the bicycle signs are, just let me know, I can get you, um, that map. And then lastly, I would like to thank Tom for his service in town, many years dedicated on the select board. Tom's thoughtful leadership, steady presence and deep commitment to our community have left a lasting impact and will continue. As you head into retirement though, I've heard retirement, you seem to be a little bit more busier. So I don't necessarily know if this is really retirement for you, right?
Well, I haven't left the role of president yet, so.
Well, valid, valid, but there's still time, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so wishing you all the best in the next chapter and hopefully it is a true retirement, right? And, um, thank you.
Uh, and there's a, a dog ordinance on my desk here too, is that something that?
Oh, I can get that.
We're not in favor of people having their dog feces left, that probably.
No, I don't. But, um, I had just asked Elsina to make this copy for me because I think it's a choice. Complain to me about, um, what's happening on their street and, and they said, don't leave anything on paper. And I said, well, let me find out, so, um, I, I just asked for myself because I wanted to give it to the person who would like to address them. So, I think Elsina made copies for everybody in case you needed to know.
Well, there we go, I'm tapped on.
It's always good to have an extra.
Good. So thank you, Elsina, maybe some social media on cleaning up after you.
So once the election is done, there will be other social media other than take it out and vote. Um, but that's pretty much what I've been focusing on is trying to get people to vote, so, yes, it'll be, can you please be a nice neighbor and clean up after, if you're going to be out walking and that kind of stuff.
Well, under correspondence, we do have the, uh, RSG sixty eight, uh, directors meeting in minutes, and we also have letters from, uh, folks regarding, uh, their feelings on ATVs. That's the most, I have to read all of them. All right, so while, uh, we have our second, uh, open session for public communications, Mr. Lusowski, you have your second opportunity to exercise your constitutional rights. Isn't it nice?
Jane, I actually find it appalling, all you'd have to do is simply apologize and say, well, I was upset and that would have been the end of the subject, but instead you're going to drag the entire town down with your stubbornness. And now you have nothing to say. You had plenty to say before, so what do you have to say now? Any answers?
Are you done?
No, I'm not, I'm asking you a question, you're not answering. Do you feel that it's inappropriate to accuse a resident who's petitioning the board over financial misconduct? And accuse him of threatening? And if you stand behind it, the board stands by it, the board doesn't even censure Miss Conroy for her lewd slanderous comments. And you think it's funny, Tom?
I think it's absurd.
You do, I think it's absurd that you allowed a board member to threaten me with murder and you claimed you had no position to stop.
It wasn't even on the board that that happened, Tom.
You were. I read it to you, you're in a video sitting on the seat you're sitting in now.
Sure.
So you became a member of the board, right?
Your lawsuit against the town accuses me of being the chairman of the board before I was even elected to the board.
You were a member of the board when I was petitioning the board about the conduct on June twenty second, twenty twenty two. And you've brought the town because of your lack of concern for resident safety into a million, eight million dollar lawsuit because you didn't have the knowledge or education to censure a member who was threatening a, a, a taxpayer with murder. Is there, is there anybody here that feels that that was wrong? Nobody? Miss Conroy, you said things that were not true, you lied to the community. I will be parked out in the road here with a sign tomorrow that says Jane Conroy is a liar, do not vote for her.
That guarantees your real election, Jane. Thanks, sir. Any other comments from the public?
Yes, Sean, I just want to, uh, wish all my fellow candidates, uh, Kevin, Jane and Lisa, good luck tomorrow. I think, uh, you know, as a town, we've done very well, we all get along as candidates, you know, you know, normally sometimes you don't see that in some towns and some elections, but I think we all get quite a cordial relationship, so I praise everybody for, for being that way in an election. No matter what happens tomorrow, I look forward to working with anybody who wins, whoever, whoever's running, you know, returning. I think that, that going forward, we can have a productive relationship and, and I wish, you know, wish everybody good luck and, uh, and see you tomorrow.
Joe?
Joe Piazza, um, I was curious, um, if we had any kind of a reinforcement for, um, if someone was bitten by a dog. Um, my husband was bitten and he ended up with stitches. Um, with the animal control officer that ended up at the hospital because of it, um, you know, the hospital called him. Um, mentioned that the gentleman whose dog it was should pay for it, Medicare paid for most of it, but there's still a hundred dollars. And so we offered the gentleman the bill, but he hasn't done anything with it, we don't have, you know. Something, is there any way that it can be reinforced?
Reinforced.
Yeah, like.
Or enforced.
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 Yeah.
Chief?
So the, the animal control officer does have the ability to issue, uh, send charges for that, and that would be a rule that if he issued those notices, then per restitution that could be paid. Uh, so I would reach out to Joe and look at what your options are with that.
Were there comments from the public? So, you've already had two chances.
I had a question about a town's liability insurance.
I'm not recognizing you, you've already spoken, you've used your constitution.
There's one limit speaking.
Yes, the, actually, our policy doesn't limit you.
The sign over there says, sits such.
There's a, there's a paperback there where. Anybody else besides?
So the town's paying a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in liability insurance. Where two years ago, we were paying ninety-three thousand dollars, and I'm curious why the liability insurance went up so much to cover, it appears to cover municipal officer liabilities, is there anything else that's increased in that policy?
Uh, any comments from the select board members? I'll close the, uh, open session for public and select board, we do have an executive session. Uh, on personnel issue that the town manager wishes to update on, us on, so that is under many of the statutes, and in title one, section four oh five, item six A, is there a motion to go? All in favor? Thank you, all right. Thank you for attending, folks, clear the room and have our little stuff.